Going to leave us a bit, but.
Yes, the closer to the mic, the better either will be for me as well.
Can you hear me now?
That's better. Yep, thank you.
Okay. This is, okay. So, as I had said, you gave us some assurance that the funds had been allocated and are received by the Finance Department in our, in our budget, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. The funds have been received and finances indicated to me that we are ready to go as soon as the projects are approved tonight.
Okay, and it's 2.5 million, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. How do you wish to proceed with this? How do you wish to proceed? One more time, how do you wish to proceed?
Yeah, I'm sorry, is that directed towards me?
Tony, how would you like to proceed with the, the meeting Tom is asking?
Um, yeah, we can go straight into the presentation that we've prepared. Jeff Lemay is here tonight to present, since I am remote and will be available for questions afterwards, so, start there.
Okay, Jeff, are you going to proceed with the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, I am. I'm going to try to turn this on. It looked easy when Mike did it, but let's try.
And where is this going to be projected? Above us?
Up there. There we go.
Is it going to be projected above us?
Yes.
Okay, well, the panel, the members are free to move to the audience area so they can see what's going on. Uh, I will remind them that if they have a question or wish to say anything, they need to be with a microphone in order to do so. Okay?
So, thank you all very much for coming. Tony and I greatly appreciate it. We're all excited about this money that the town has decided to allocate our department, and I'll get right into it. Um, so we're here to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act and how it's directly impacting South Windsor's Water Pollution Control Department. So, the purpose of this act, as, as I've seen sort of summarized, is the funding is coming from the federal government and it can be used to help public health and also some of the negative economic impacts that have occurred due to the COVID-19 virus. And as that relates to us, Connecticut has received 2.6 billion dollars in grant funds and their responsibility is to allocate that to different municipalities. And water, sewer, and bran, broadband infrastructure are all acceptable ways to use this money. Um, and so, you know, in that vein, South Windsor, out of this 2.6 billion that the state received, received 7.7 million dollars. And prior to knowing how much money we were going to receive, Tony and I came up with a list of projects, around 6 million dollars worth, not knowing how much we were going to get. And we ended up with 2.5 million that had been allocated to our department for sewer infrastructure improvements. And there's a number of other town projects that were accepted, but depending on how those projects go, any unexpended funds from those projects will also be made available for sewer projects. And so, when Tony and I were sort of breaking this thing out, we made sure to have a wide range of projects. I think it was everywhere from 10,000 dollars to 1.4, 1.5 million dollar projects. Uh, so for accountability, part of this process is making sure that every dollar spent with this money is accounted for. I want to make sure that we're being transparent and that funds are being used as they are intended. And this actually makes wastewater relatively easy because the, the water and wastewater infrastructure projects are sort of a slam dunk when it comes to this. So, there will be quarterly reporting that finance will be responsible for and providing detailed information again on, on how all the funds are being used. Um, as far as transparency goes, in the next slide that I'll show, you'll see it's ClearGov that the town of South Windsor is now using. And my understanding of ClearGov, I guess I'll get right to the next slide here. It looks like this is a way for residents to view everything that's going on budgetary wise with the town. Uh, as it relates to us and these funds, is it'll, it'll sort of delineate the different projects. And then, um, it's going to have things like status reports, what the money exactly is being spent on, the justification for that money, um, the locations of the projects, what phase the projects are in, really to make sure, and then obviously exact dollar amounts, just to make sure that the public is totally aware of where this money is going towards. Um, and Tony can correct me if I'm wrong, I think right now you have to do a little bit of sort of navigating in the town website to get to this, but Tony, am I correct that there's going to be a button at some point at the town website that somebody can just click on?
Yes, that was my understanding. I don't know if IT has added that yet, but, um, I understand there's going to potentially be a button right on the homepage of the town website where you can click on these projects and be able to view them.
And then I think IT is setting all this stuff up, but then people like Tony and Mike, well, I'm not sure about myself, but Tony would be able to go in there as the department head and then edit things and give progress reports and, and stuff of that nature. So, that's how everybody in the public is going to be kept aware of how this very important money is being spent. So, the way that we sort of have things laid out when you're looking at the different colors here is the most critical projects are going to be in red. The medium sort of projects are going to be in yellow, orangish when those come up, and then the, the, I don't want to say less important, they're important, but the least important in terms of this in the green. So, as far as the treatment plant goes, we came up with a total of 2.72 million dollars worth of projects that we thought were critical. Uh, UV disinfection is a big one. Uh, the system is 20 years old right now. The new UV systems consume about a third of the electricity of what the, the current ones do, and for us, that's a massive power savings. Um, one thing that's not on the slide that I want to add to that is right now our disinfection season is five months. And, um, in, in upcoming permits with DEEP, I know that in some communities, they've upped that to seven months out of the year, which is going to make this all, all that much more of an important project to get done. Um, I can also tell you that parts for this system are becoming more and more difficult to come by. And, um, operators that know how to work with it, thankfully, we have two of them that are very familiar, but it's getting more and more difficult. The new systems are easier to use and they use a lot less energy. Um, so that, that's a big one. Um, odor control, we're currently undergoing a study with Ty and Bond with our current odor control system. Uh, that system is a biological system and it's basically a, a mix of soil and wood chips that micro life lives on to help consume odors essentially. Um, and it's problematic because it, it, uh, it decays every two to three years, you have to replace. So, you know, it's, it's not ideal. So, again, we're going through an odor control study right now with Ty and Bond, and then they're going to come up with some recommendations. But just as a budgetary number, we're looking at probably about 1.2 million dollars for odor control. And I can tell you that, you know, that, that's a very important thing, particularly to the neighbors there on Main Street that live in such close proximity to the plant. Uh, the work order software, currently we use something called HAC JobCal. Um, it's not that it doesn't have its place or it's not useful, but we're looking for something that makes it easier for me to assign specific tasks to specific people, to keep better track of parts and better track of how much time and money we're spending on different projects, and to have something that'll be easier to, to look at when we go back and try to figure out what maintenance we did on what pieces of equipment. And then sludge line replacement, there are a couple lines in the plant that convey sludge from one treatment process to another. Those lines, some of them were not upgraded when the treatment plant was upgraded. And so, a lot of them have a fair amount of grease on the inside and it takes a lot of chemical at times and a lot of manual labor to keep those lines clear and keep our process moving. So, sludge line replacement, while we're, we're doing fine, you know, that, that's kind of would be a nice thing to get done at some point. Uh, moving on to the collection systems, Phase Four, Part Two, that's our, our lining projects in the sewer lines. Uh, Part One is already budgeted for this year, but with this money, we could spend an additional 1.1 million dollars and we could get Part Two done as well. So, there's a big potential cost savings here, particularly in the mobilization and demobilization costs. I don't see it up here, but I want to say it's in the neighborhood of 15,000 to 20,000 dollars rather than doing these projects in, in two separate pieces to do them all at once. Um, and then the other thing with that is we know that, you know, there's parts of our sewer system that, you know, are of considerable age and considerable, some of them risk of failure. And getting this portion done is going to get us a long way towards really getting our sewer system very healthy. So, to me, this is another very critical, very critical part of, of what we should use this money for. Um, and then the other critical part on the collection system, as some of you may know, Clark Street and Pleasant Valley and Benedict Drive pump stations are due for upgrade. Clark Street conveys a massive portion of the town's wastewater and that's the, the pump station that's due to be upgraded the soonest, hopefully, next construction season. In order to do that construction, a new bypass valve needs to be put in. What we are proposing is that we put in that bypass valve now. By doing it now, it really hardens us off for the next year so that things that are broken or, or continue to go wrong with that pump station, if we have this valve, our staff is perfectly capable of doing that work. Without the valve, it's very difficult. So, for 100,000 dollars, we've already gotten some prices on this, we can get this valve installed and our engineers have assured us that this is the exact thing that they would be doing for the upgrade anyway. So, what I would say is in addition to really making this pump station viable for another year, is that's 100,000 dollars that then wouldn't have to get bonded out as part of the pump station upgrade projects. Um, and then less critical here, but still important, we have the, the SSES is a, that's a sewer evaluation study, right, Tony?
Correct, yeah. We did one in 2015, which gave us Phases One, Two, Three, and Four. We're completing Phase Four now, and, um, so that was in 2015. So, we're due for another one and that'll set us up for another decade of proposed projects that we, you know, where we can fortify the system.
Yep, so that's, that's a big one. Uh, the next is the manhole replacements. We have some manholes on Avery Street and Chapel Road that are in pretty poor condition. Um, and then it might make more sense to do a total replace versus trying to rehab and risking failure. So, we have 120,000 dollars for that. And then we also have a Clark Street force main evaluation for 35,000 dollars and that would just be a study by an engineer to help make sure that that force main is going to be able to get us through another 20 years before the next upgrade after this one. Um, and then as far as pump station needs go, as I just alluded to, we have upgrades of our three biggest stations coming up. Those are in design phase right now with Arcadis. Um, they're estimating a total of around 9 million dollars. Um, those are not hard and fast numbers right now, but it's a best guess. Uh, Clark Street at about 3.5 million dollars, Benedict Drive at 3 million dollars, and Pleasant Valley Pump Station at about 2.5 million dollars. The fire alarm panels, uh, so we have a fire alarm panel at the treatment plant and what happens is if something, um, if something triggers a fire alarm on that panel, um, our SCADA system will relay that information to myself and the operators, but what it also does is it, it's got a direct line to the police dispatch. So, before we even get there, the fire department, police, anybody who needs to be there is already, is already going to be there. Um, so what I'm looking to do is to have those same panels or a similar panel at each one of our pump stations. Currently, we get SCADA alarms that would tell us that, you know, a heat detector went off or something like that. But Tony and I both agree that for the, for the 50,000 dollars or so that we were budgeted for, or the budget number we were given for this, it'd be really nice for somebody not to have to think at 2 o'clock in the morning before I go in, let me call the police department. So, that, that we also see as a critical need. Uh, the SCADA radio system upgrade, we're sort of in the process with this right now. Uh, this is the system that allows us to communicate with the pump stations all over town. So, if this system isn't working properly, then we will not get SCADA alarms on our phones and the computers to let us know that something is going wrong at a pump station. While everything is currently working, the infrastructure there is dated and due for upgrade as these stations become more sophisticated, that the system needs to keep up with it. So, we're, we're already starting that with Marcus Communications with replacing the antennas. This 80,000 dollars would be for replacing the radios and, you know, other equipment associated with it over the next couple of years. So, these are our proposed projects, which, you know, I've already kind of gone over, but the UV disinfection system. Uh, it's very expensive to run right now. Um, I'm going to say just based on our typical electric costs that over the summer, depending on how much flow we're getting, six, seven, eight, 10,000 dollars a month sometimes to run the UV. So, that's very expensive and again, the new bulbs use only about a third of that energy. The immediate cost savings is 17,000 dollars or so a year. Another thing I forgot to mention is that this is a project that would likely be eligible for some Eversource funding. So, the, the number that you're seeing that we showed you here for the, I think it was 1.3 or 1.4 million, that's not including any of that. So, um, you know, any of that money that we would get from Eversource, um, you know, for being, you know, responsible with our electrical equipment, obviously, that, that would lower that cost. Uh, the Phase Far, Four, Part Two, um, again, this is just making sure that our collection system is staying as up to date as possible. The other thing I'll, I'll mention quickly, not to bore you on the collection system, is in addition to making sure that these pipes don't collapse, when these pipes are in bad shape, they let in extraneous water. And, um, just as an example, uh, over the summer, we would typically be receiving about 2 million gallons a day of, of wastewater under normal weather conditions. And over this past summer, I have seen that number up at 10 million gallons instantaneously and 7, 8, 9 million gallons over the course of a day. And that is a massive cost for us to treat. That means pumps have to run harder. That means that UV disinfection system has to run harder and it's just more wear and tear on the equipment. So, that's another reason why the, the sewer work is so important. And again, the, the Clark Street force main valve, um, it's just going to ensure that between now and when we start construction that we don't end up with an emergency at Clark Street. Uh, the benefits to the sewer users, and I'll, I'll go through some of this, Tony can probably elaborate on some of it better than I can. But we're going to be completing critical short-term projects, um, which sets us up better for our long-term borrowing for the pump station upgrades. Um, it's going to help minimize sewer user rates over the next few years because these are projects that are critical and need to get done anyway. And now we have these unexpected funds to do some of them. Uh, the cost savings, we, we've gone over that, I, I won't go over it again, but, um, you can see there's going to be significant cost savings uh, right off the bat for these projects. And it's also going to give us the ability to set aside funds for the Quarry Brook Pump Station Upgrade, which will be due in 2026. And Tony, if you want to elaborate on that, please feel free.
All right, yeah, I mean, that basically covers it. It's just by completing these projects, it's going to, um, set us up for the next, you know, three to five years for, uh, capital projects and, and that obviously is going to benefit the sewer user with use, um, lower user rates, minimal increases. So, um, yeah, that, that basically covers it and that's why we chose these projects. You know, so, you know, the UV, there's obviously a, a immediate cost savings. And then with the Phase Four, we're already doing Part One this year, this will be in addition to that, as originally was attended, intended. Complete Part Two and, and kind of lump that into one bid spec.
Thanks, Tony. And questions? Thank you all very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey, for that presentation. There's a, a couple of questions that I have and then I'll turn it over to the panel members. In the presentation, it was noted that there's quarterly reporting. Who do those reports go to?
Uh, that, I think, is a you question, Tony. Is that stuff that, that's going to be on the website, right? Is it, is that going to be part of the ClearGov?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
The question is for the quarterly reporting, who do the reports go to?
Oh, that would be, yeah, so the Finance Department will handle that, um, and I believe they send that to the Treasury Department.
Okay. And the second thing, if I can see this. Oh, there was a, a note that by doing the Phase Four, we'd save 15,000 dollars in mobilization costs. Would that 15,000 be rolled into the Phase Four project to get more done?
Yeah, we wanted to, right, so if we did this as two separate projects, typically as part of a contract, there's mobilization and demobilization costs, as Jeff said. Um, if we do it as one project, you're only going to be charged that amount once. Also, we may get better bid prices if we, um, have a larger quantity of, of segments that, that need to be completed.
Okay, my third question is there was mentioned that there may be funding available from outside sources for the UV replacement. Is that, was that accurate?
Uh, I can say that, that it is. Um, it was a couple of years ago before, before COVID even was something anybody was thinking about, where we had a gentleman come in, one of our vendors for Trojan that, that builds these UV systems. Um, and we had him come in and we were just looking at the viability of our system over the next few years. And he was the one that indicated that there was, um, energy savings. There's an engineering firm, I think it's JK Muir, that works directly with Eversource on these projects. Because this wasn't a bid-ready project, um, we, we were not able to go down the, uh, the line there to see what those savings or those funds might be. But I know that that's something that's, um, still being done at this time, so.
Okay, if funds are available from another source, does that free the federal funds for other projects on our list?
Uh, that's what I would say. I didn't want to step on Tony's toes in saying that, but I would imagine so. If we've been allocated this chunk of money and out of the projects that we want to do, there's more left over, then I, yeah, I would, I would think absolutely.
Correct, that's why we built the, um, um, the priority list the way we did with, uh, wide variety of project costs and projects that would benefit the facility and, and infrastructure that we have. So, if we have, you know, an additional, you know, 20,000 dollars, we can go down the list and find a, a project that'll fit within that budget so we can get. go down the list and find a a project that'll fit within that budget, so we can get more work done, better utilize the funds.
Okay, Stephen, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I think my question was similar, and maybe maybe you've already answered it, but, you know, you have nice round numbers for these projects, uh, when you actually get bids and you actually get the price, it could be lower or higher. Uh, if it comes out lower, um, I I I don't know if you're asking us to approve these tonight as our priority, but uh, do we need to identify, you know, what are the next priorities, uh, should these come in lower?
Right, so if we have additional funding, or if we get additional funding from other town projects that came in under under budget, um, yeah, I'll I'll come with you to with another priority list, um, and we'll we'll go through a similar presentation. Um, you know, maybe it won't be so in-depth this time, but we'll we'll look, focus more on the projects and our budget is, um, and then we'll, you know, we'll get the different projects we can get done.
So I guess, I mean, the point of my question is, right now, I I understand you got a nice two and a half million dollar collection of three projects. If they come in at 2.4 million, do do we need to do anything now to prevent us from losing the savings, or can we uh, reallocate the money as we go under this uh, ARPA program?
Yeah, so we can allocate, um, yeah, we can allocate the money however we see fit. Um, we're proposing um, the allocated funds for each of these projects on our uh, planning estimated um, budgets. Um, you know, those tend to be a little conservative, so, you know, hopefully they'll, they will come on, come in under budget. So yeah, I mean, if they do go over budget, then we're gonna have to, you know, readjust on, you know, some of our priorities. You know, for example, for um, phase four, part two, if that comes in over budget, um, we can take some segments out, so that's, that's an easy one to adjust to uh, fit within uh, the allocated funds that we have.
So I guess, another way of putting it, is there anything we need to do now to make sure that if we find, you know, these projects come in with a lower estimate, uh, we don't lose the difference uh, with the with the federal government, um, that we can say a year from now, a year from now, we can say, uh, oh, dear, our uh, our projects are coming in at 2.4 million instead of 2.5 million, so we'd like to spend a hundred thousand dollars on uh, uh, Woodside Drive Sewer or something like that. Can we make those changes down the road?
Yeah, Tony, this this portion of it is sort of just between us and the town, because the town has allocated this amount of money, and then they're just waiting to hear what we're gonna do with it, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So to answer your question, Steve, I think the answer to that question is no, we don't, we don't have to worry about that. The real, I think, Tony, the the real thing that we wanna do is, um, if we get approval, if we're able to get approval on these three projects, then we can really get the ball rolling on those three. Um, and just another thing real quick, we did make sure that we asked for a worst-case scenario pricing, um, so I do think that, you know, I I, I'm not gonna stand up here and say that the pricing's gonna come in lower, um, but our engineers, I think, took us seriously with that, so I think these are solid numbers.
So, yeah, I guess what I'm saying, maybe another way of asking the question is, should we identify now? I oftentimes, when we go in, when I've I've been involved in other bonding projects, uh, we have a, well, what are you gonna do if you have money left over and you have like a, an add-on list of what you would like to do if you come in low, and that way, um, you you have some pre-approval of using the money, uh, that you didn't use on the three main projects.
We, we did, um, sorry, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, yeah, so included with your agenda pack was a priority list.
Yeah.
Um, at the top, you'll see the the top three projects that we're proposing to um, get approval on tonight. Um, as you work down the list, you'll see the the red, yellow, and and green projects. Um, and that's just what we, what we rated as critical to least critical at this juncture. Um, and again, these are, the prices of the project, you know, there's, there's a big range between the projects, so if we get, you know, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars, we can work down, all right, the, we have an additional fifty thousand dollars, and then I can come to the authority and say, you know, we have a fifty thousand dollar budget, we've got a quote to um, improve the file, fire alarm system, um, and I'll propose that to you, and then that can either be approved or denied. Um, yeah, but if you move down, say we have an additional, you know, so that that's kinda how we do, that's why we built this priority list and provided it to you. Um, it's just something to think about, um, as we're going through this, and as we update it, and we get a better idea of what our budgets are, um, where the project costs are gonna be, um, then we can continue to work down the priority list and get as much work done as we can.
I mean, I mean, just between us, I'm happy to say, all right, we'll play it by ear when it happens, if we, we're lucky enough to have that happen, uh, but I, again, maybe we oughta say when we, when we submit this, that should these come in lower, these are our other priorities, so they're all in the list, and tell whoever it is that approves this that we would uh, choose other projects to uh, use up the entire two and a half million, so we don't lose anything. But that's a question of kinda what the policies are and.
If, if I may, um.
Yeah, the authority gives um, gives me the latitude to do that, we, we can do that. Um, you know, we can include the next critical, which was the fire alarm, and um, I'm looking at the chart now. Odor control, we're not quite sure on what that cost might be, um, that's worst-case scenario.
Tony, Tony, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just did. Uh, as I understand it, and correct me if I make a misstatement here, the funds have been placed in the replacement reserve as our regulations require. And our actions tonight are identifying projects and getting them in motion to take funds from the replacement reserve and fund these projects. Under our regulations, if there are funds left over on a project, they go back to the replacement reserve. The only caveat I understand with these funds is if they are not spent by December of 2024, they revert to the federal government. Does that summarize it rather well?
Yep, that's correct, yep.
Okay, so if funds are left over, as with any capital project we undertake, and we return them to the replacement reserve, we are then free to reallocate them to other projects. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, does that answer your question, Steve?
It's probably the best we can do at this time, uh, it's really only a question of whether we list additional projects on this list as our next priorities, or don't bother and just wait for good news to happen. And I'll leave it up to you now that we've discussed it, what you recommend doing.
Okay, are you set? Okay, Toby, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, well, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the use of allocated 2.5 million American Rescue Plan Act grant funds for the following projects. One, UV disinfection system upgrade in the amount of 1.3 million dollars. Two, phase four of part two in the amount of 1 million, 100,000 dollars. And three, Clark Street bypass valve installation in the amount of 100,000 dollars.
Is there a second? Second from Carol. Any further discussion on the motion?
That's already part of our process, that's what we do anyway.
Steve, I'm sorry, is your microphone on?
No, it's not. Your, your mic, your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, there we go.
Uh, whether we should add a clause that uh, should these projects uh, uh, come in at a, a less than 2.5 million dollars, uh, the money would be allocated to other high-priority projects. So it's either a friendly amendment or not.
Are you going to amend it then?
I didn't understand you, Carol.
Oh, are you going to amend the motion then?
That's what my idea is, but.
You're offering an amendment?
Yes.
You're offering a second? Okay, there is an amendment to the motion, any discussion on the amendment? There being none, vote in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Any further discussion on the motion as amended?
Should the cost of the uh, three projects uh, um, be less than 2.5 million dollars, the remaining money would be allocated to other high-priority projects.
Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion as amended, any further discussion on the motion as amended? There being none, vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Um, not yet. Tony, as we move forward to our next regular meeting, uh, if possible, could you prepare some sort of an outline of an action plan for implementing these projects, a timeline, uh, and critical steps that we need to be aware of and take action on to move them forward?
Yep, I can put that together.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other commentary about the subject that needs to be had tonight?
I think it's great news, I think you chose the best three projects.
Okay, there being no further discussion?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
This would be a big help for us.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? There is a second from Carol. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all for your participation.
Thank you all very much.
The time is 7:38.